Let's call to order the meeting of the Mayor and City Council, City of Tonitown, for the month of September, and ask Councilman Wentz to lead us in the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. All councilists present, except for Councilman Frazier. Moving on to the first order of business is the approval of the minutes for August 3rd and August 8th, regular meetings. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Some move.
For a second.
Second.
Is there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Can I bring up the point I made about the motion to send the sign back to the planning commission? Did you review the tapes?
They were reviewed.
In front of you.
Yes, that was in June.
Yeah.
That was not at last.
That motion was in June, and it is in the minutes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. So carried. Very good. Again, a reminder that any councilman or councilperson who has a conflict with any of the agenda items needs to make that known. Does anyone have any conflicts?
No, sir.
No.
No.
All right. We have resolutions, ordinances, and agreements coming up next. First is the ordinance 26-2006, the amendment to the signed ordinance for introduction.
I move that we introduce.
All right. I guess we have to move in second. Let's just present that, right?
Do we need a motion to introduce that?
What we need the motion for, and you can do it as part of that, is to set the hearing date. So if you move to introduce and set a hearing date, we had talked about the hearing being October 5th.
October 5th.
If that's what you wanted, as soon as possible, that would be the day.
Okay. I move we introduce and set the public hearing date to October 5th as part of our council workshop.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Signed, so carried. Next, we have resolution 2016-7, 27, which is the water allocation for the month of September. Care to make a motion to adopt that resolution?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
I need discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. So carried. And for approval, we have the website redesign implementation. Care to make a motion to accept the website redesign implementation?
I move that we accept a bid from Revice for the website redesign.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I would like to say that it's a great effort been put forth by the IT department to make this user-friendly. There are some new technologies that make it so lots of people with low Internet experience can have input into the website, not just professionals. And that's one of the features of this particular proposal that's been moved for action tonight, is that it would be user-friendly to non-sophisticated people, or many laypeople. We had a situation in Agour Evangelism where Joe helped me with the website, and we were able to do, and as technology increases and improves, lots of people in the county, in the city staff will be able to help get the website. And, for example, one of the things that should be on the website is all the boards and commissions and their terms and expiration. You can't find that information out anywhere. So those things could be put up by just about anybody. So I would agree that we should go ahead and purchase this one, even though I questioned some of the expenditures tonight.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Next, we have two police vehicles that have been presented for purchase. Anyone care to make a motion to approve these vehicles?
I make that motion that we purchase the two vehicles from Patrick Fleet.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. So carried. Next, waste water treatment plant mixer replacement is due. Would anyone care to make a motion to replace the waste water treatment plant mixer?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. So carried. Next, we have Henry's comments. Anything further for us tonight, Henry?
Nothing to add.
Anyone have any questions for Henry? All right. How about any questions on the departmental reports?
But I would just remind everybody about next month. We're moving.
Meaning to the...
Which will be the...
Instead of Monday, it'll be Tuesday.
The second Tuesday of the month, or I guess the Tuesday following the second month.
On October 11th.
The second Tuesday or not. It could be the third Tuesday, I guess.
What's that date?
October the 11th.
October 11th.
Which is the real Veterans Day, anyway, right?
Columbus Day. Yeah.
I think Veterans Day is November the 11th, but we celebrate it on...
November, yeah. But next week, next month.
I mean, October the...
Well, Columbus. The difference is Columbus Day is always on a month.
Columbus Day. That's what we're trying to prove.
That's it.
Columbus Day.
Well, okey-dokey.
All right.
But in November, the Veterans Day moves and stays on the 11th. It never moves off the 11th.
Always on the 11th.
Celebrating the armistice of...
Of First World War.
World War I. World War II. The 11th day of the 11th hour, blah.
Month, minute.
All right. In October, we'll meet on the day after Columbus Day. Next, we have the legal report. Jay, you have some discussion to be...
I know you've been zipping along, but now we're going to slow down. We have some things to discuss. Two items. The first item is the draft resolution on the referendum election. We talked about that. I gave you a PowerPoint presentation about that. And I've told you what the moving parts are about how you want to do that. If you use the draft resolution as the template for our discussion here, basically, the timing of the election is what that resolution is going to do primarily. And I gave you three options that you could do that. And the first option was the next general election, May 1st. The second option was a special election, November 15th. And the third option was some special election date that is yet to be determined, but would be after January 2017.
So if option B or C are chosen, we'll need to make that motion, which includes times?
Yes. If you choose B or C, you're going to need to include times on that, times for the polls to be open. The state law says that you can pick whatever times you want. The city charter says that special elections should be held as close as practical to what our normal terms are, and our normal elections are usually seven to seven. So you can vary those under state law, but what we have right now is seven to seven.
Anyone care to make a motion, one way or the other?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to, for the sake of getting on with this, and perhaps maybe getting on with some city business, I'd like to propose that we hold a special election on November 15th.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I wanted to remember what we were told on Wednesday. On Wednesday, Mrs. Bob Flickinger came and said that she didn't like wasting money on this. I thought a couple ways to not waste money. One would be to have it as a question, like our attorney said at the bottom of the ballot in May, when we all meet for elections, which will not require the cost of general elections. I'm troubled that a motion would be made to spend the additional money to do that. The other thing that's not included, and I want to hand this out to everyone, is wording for the referendum. And so I have prepared some wording. This is not on the legal report, the wording of the referendum. You could make up wording after we vote today that said just about anything.
You gave me two copies. Councilman, you gave me two copies.
I have one, so thank you very much. So I have proposed this wording today before you adopt going to special election. Also, we had a lengthy discussion on Wednesday, Mr. Mayor, concerning the improper action of moving this motion to conclusion. The law requires that we receive the report that was given to us before, because we're the elected body. But if that would happen, it would give the ability for us to debate, for example, whether the 60 people that mailed in, just like we're talking right now, would be considered, or whether those registered voters that I attempted to read at the Wednesday night meeting that should have been included were included. And then you all could vote on that. But since you've avoided that procedure that's in law and gone directly to calling a special election, it just breaks the law to not receive the work of the staff and act upon it. The amazing thing about that is that, just like the procedures for the petition not filed to strike the names of duly-elected, duly-registered voters who are concerned about that, it just occurred to me, a criticism was made at the well here on Wednesday night, that somehow something's wrong with associating this with a water bill. Well, let's assume all 1,181 people that signed the petition were confused and thought it was about the water bill. That should tell the council that there's 1,181 people concerned about the water bill, that the water bill's way too high. I don't think many people were deceived, because the wording of this sort of goes through it correctly. It says permanently authorizes the city council members to remove any duly-elected member...
Councilman Frazier, we're not dealing with the wording for the referendum tonight. We're just setting the date.
There's a motion in second, and I'm speaking to that motion.
Yeah, but you can offer an amendment to deal with the wording if you'd like.
No, no. If you look at the report of the legal council, the wording is omitted from it, and it calls for suggestions to be made, and it was actually mentioned on Wednesday. It says that a duly-elected member by a majority of the other four members, in case of either, an accusation that the member has missed three consecutive meetings. Well, I asked the motion after I came, the council, to excuse my absence in June, when you all had a secret meeting. I asked you to excuse that when I came back, and you all would not even consider that. I made a motion, it died for lack of a second. So it's clearly clear that if we would adopt a charter amendment for removal of office...
Okay, anyone else?
That, no, it's, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, it's very clear that if you'd adopt this, that a person wouldn't be excused if he wasn't popular. You just wouldn't excuse my absence like you wouldn't excuse my business trip to Tanzania in June. The council was rude and would not excuse my absence to do there, even though I'd announced it before I left. The other reason would be an accusation that the member had violated any part of our ordinance, or even, let's see, the one you just adopted that I called the Incumbent Protection Act, any provision of that. If you could bring this up, if you had a majority, two simple three people could remove a person.
Mayor, haven't we heard this before?
I'm sorry?
I say, haven't we heard this before? Isn't it time to move on? Yes.
So it says the amendment also permanently authorizes the city council to censure any member. And I still protest that I was never censured.
You need to address the motion that's on the floor, Councilman. You're way out in left field, talking about things that don't pertain at all to this motion.
The motion has to do with the draft submission here that you all held...
The motion has to do with setting the date.
Setting a date for the election.
Yeah, this draft...
That's all.
That's right.
Do you agree or disagree with that date?
I disagree with it. That's not...
Okay. Any other, that's enough discussion on that. Is there anybody else have any discussion?
Let me ask our council, when would we go into the wording about the special election, the referendum? If you pass this motion and say that you want that date to be the date, then we would work with the election board to make sure that the registration happens. And then, under state law, you would have to have a special meeting between 40 and 60 days prior to that date, and that's when you would adopt the resolution that contains the wording at that point. My suggestion to you at the last meeting was that you hold a special meeting the night of the work session, since you know you'll already be here and that's on your schedule. And so if you adopt this first motion, I would ask you to make another motion to set a special meeting for 7:00 on the 5th, and that would nail that down as well. And that's the time that the actual resolution that you have would no longer be draft. It would have a resolution number, and it would have the wording for you to debate and include as you see fit.
The first way, Mr. Counselor, to lower the costs, like Mrs. Flickinger asked to, and Commissioner Frazier, who spoke to this additional cost, would be for the councilmen, since they voted in favor of passing an unconstitutional removal, to make a motion to reconsider and withdraw this charter amendment from the laws of Tonitown.
That can't happen.
With the referendum, we can't do that.
Just a simple vote, it could happen.
No, it could not happen. That specifically violates the Maryland statute. Once it's been passed...
That's just not so. If they decided to reverse direction and to remove this charter amendment that nobody in Tonitown knew anything about...
But at that point, we'd have to ignore the referendum.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just stop the speculation, I knew you were going to say that. I already had it marked. Recision of a proposed charter amendment prohibited. After a resolution is adopted by the legislative body and after its submission in a petition, a proposal to amend a municipal charter may not be rescinded in any manner except by another charter amendment.
Well, they could, I guess, resubmit it at a later time then, if they would repeal it.
All right. We have a motion, and it's been seconded to hold the special election on the 15th of November. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
I'm opposed to that. It ought to be in the general election, not to waste money.
Right, four to one. All right.
Now, I'd ask, do you set the special meeting date?
I would further like a motion to set a special meeting date to take place on October 5th to discuss the wording of the referendum. That meeting should take place at 7:00 PM. Are you sure 7:00 is good?
Do you think you can get it done in a half hour?
No.
Okay.
I would recommend 6:30.
6:30.
Yeah. If we get it done early, great.
Yes.
We can go to McDonald's for dinner.
Right.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Well, I'm very glad that I gave you all the proposed wording I have. It also makes it super, empowers the majority to abuse the minority by moving forward a censure.
You may, I encourage you to bring that to this...
Now, this meeting on 6:30 on the 5th, what kind of a meeting is that going to be? Is that going to be a secret meeting?
No.
That's for this.
That's for this. That would be a public...
You would have listened, you would know.
We don't have secret meetings. We have closed...
Oh, you've had one. The other reason that you should not adopt, go forward like this, is because there's a pending complaint against the Open Meetings Compliance Board about this very issue. This is a hasty graffiti on our town charter, and it should, you should not have moved this forward today. You're going to have to address...
You know what they say about innocent until proven guilty, don't you?
What's that?
You've heard that before.
Well, you rushed through a charter amendment, now you rush through a special election.
I feel like the city was rushed through approving the petition.
The suit is before anybody.
Months and months it took to approve it. May the 19th was the last day to sign the petition. And when did we, did you get your report, Councilman Bigliotti?
Is there any further discussion?
I'm sorry, I was listening to the mayor.
Want to know any further discussion?
No.
All right. It's a move in second to behold a special meeting on October the 5th to discuss the wording of the resolution, as it will appear on the ballot.
And you're going to pass the resolution at that meeting.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? So carried. Okay. Anything else for us, Council?
I do. I have one more thing. Let me adjust my papers around here. You're aware, obviously, at the work session, that you all, the city, was served with a lawsuit regarding an open meetings complaint. And typically, I would suggest to my clients, when they're municipal clients, that you go into closed session to talk about the complaint, so that I could explain to you the legal impacts of that. The Maryland law allows for closed meetings to talk with your attorney, just as you can imagine if you'd want to talk with your attorney privately and get advice. The issue that we have with that is one that stems from earlier issues, whereas if we had this closed meeting, Councilman Frazier, you would need to recuse yourself and excuse yourself from the meeting, because you have a conflict of interest. And what is my conflict of interest? Your conflict of interest is that your wife is the one suing the city.
Well, she's a victim. Two victims of this open meetings violation occurred. One, two people arrived the day of that meeting and were turned away at the door. They were told that it was a closed meeting, they were not allowed to come, there was no open meetings portion of the meeting, and you know the law. And our mayor was a former chairman of the Maryland Municipal League, and he should know the law. And you cannot have a meeting without an open meeting.
Well, that's the issue of the lawsuit. The issue I was talking about is your conflict of interest.
I don't have a conflict of interest. I wasn't a victim.
I understand that you say you don't have a conflict of interest, and to that point, you all received this lawsuit, right? You all were served with that, and you're very familiar with that.
That's right. And I have a right to know what the city attorney has to say about it.
And here's the story about what I'd like to continue with. If you go to Exhibit A of the lawsuit, you all want to take the time to go to Exhibit A. Exhibit A of the lawsuit is a letter dated June 20th, 2016, from me to Dan Cox, your attorney. This was sent directly from me to your attorney. And the question that then begs the question is, how did a letter from me to your attorney end up in a court pleading filed by your wife? And if you don't think that presents a conflict of interest, because she had to have gotten it from you or from your attorney...
Now, you introduced the letter at a public meeting.
I may have talked about the letter at a public...
You did. You called out the meeting, you held it up, just like you're holding that piece of paper up.
But how did she get the copy of it then?
It's public record, when you hold it up at a public meeting.
How did she get the copy? She got it from you. And that's my point, is that it places you in...
That's not true, but...
...an impossible situation, because here you're married to the person suing the town. How could you not have a conflict? However, I've anticipated how you were going to act on this. And what I'm suggesting is that we'll take an unusual step. I've talked to the mayor about this. And instead of going into closed session, I'd like to advise you about this in public session. This is very unorthodox. I'm not going to give you any legal advice or any strategies, because we're not going to waive the attorney-client privilege that you're done. But I'd like at least you to understand what the lawsuit is about. First of all, the city is being sued. You're not being sued individually. And you, as councilpeople and the mayor, have a fiduciary duty to defend the city, all of you. So the first thing you have to realize is it's an open meetings complaint. Typically, open meetings complaints are taken to the Open Meetings Compliance Board. We have a pending complaint like that already. This one was taken directly to the Circuit Court of Carroll County. There's different allegations in there, and this is treated just like any lawsuit, okay? It might be open meetings, it might be government, but it's just as if you were in a car accident and somebody is suing you for damaging their car. It's going to be subject to the same Circuit Court rules that go on, and this could last for some time. The important part to remember about this lawsuit is that there are usually damages requested. Damages meaning what does the plaintiff, the person who wants to file the suit, Ms. Frazier in this, what does she want from the city? And you can direct your attention to page eight and nine, and what they want from the city, what Ms. Commissioner Frazier, or former Commissioner Frazier would like from the city, is she's requesting $8,250 in fines that the city would have to pay as a civil penalty. Those fines are broken out for different violations in different parts of the law dealing with the open meetings. She's also asking for a $1,000 fine for every open public meeting held in violation of the open meeting law from there forward, and also asking for reimbursement of her legal expenses and court fees, although there's no attorney representing at this point in time. So that's what's at stake with the open meetings compliance. Further, after we've reviewed the lawsuit, we have a couple options that you need to be aware of. The first thing is, as is customary with all lawsuits, I turn it over to our insurance company, the local government insurance trust, to see if our local government insurance trust will make a coverage determination. If they make the coverage determination, saying we have insurance coverage, that's semi-good news for the town. It means that you do not have to pay for legal representation that the insurance company does. But just like if you made an insurance claim on your homeowner's insurance or car insurance, it's not free. There will be an assessment later. Your premiums go up, because your risk history is bad. They may cover, they may not cover. That determination hasn't been made. The next thing that has to be done for the city is make an answer or a motion. And we have 30 days from the date you were sued, so you can calculate that in your head from last Wednesday. So basically, that's what we need to do. And what I suggest, because I know that we're going to have difficulty in having closed legal sessions pursuant to the law, because Councilman Frazier is going to be difficult and not want to recuse himself, even though you can see the obvious conflict that you would have. What I would ask you to do is make a motion tonight to empower the mayor to handle the lawsuit, including the hiring of outside counsel if necessary. Pass that motion, and then we can proceed with defending the lawsuit, so we aren't hamstrung. There was one other comment that was made at the last meeting that dealt with the fact that, as the city attorney, I couldn't represent you on this matter. I certainly could represent you, regardless of whether I'm lamed in here and there's factual questions about attendance at meetings. There's no conflict of interest. The only way I could have a conflict is if I actually represented the plaintiffs in the past, and I've never represented the plaintiffs. So while I could represent the city, and may represent the city as we move forward, I would suggest that your motion include the power to hire outside counsel, so that can be the sole focus of what they do. Questions?
Why would you want to empower the mayor to do that? With already so many things going on in secret, we can't tell what's happening. Why wouldn't issues regarding the lawsuit be discussed in open session, like you told us you would do at the beginning of your comments tonight?
Two things. One, we don't discuss lawsuits in open session. It's bad policy, just like your wife didn't talk to her lawyer in open session, so we could understand what she's saying. So that's number one. And the reason we're empowering the mayor is, quite frankly, you know that you will make it difficult for this group to deal with this lawsuit, and as a fiduciary responsibility to the city, we still have to defend the lawsuit that you somehow think you don't have a conflict with, when it's your wife bringing it.
1,181 people are upset about this constitutional amendment, and they're trying to tell the city something.
And that has nothing to do with this. We're talking about the lawsuit filed under an Open Meetings Act. And we also recall what the seed of this Open Meetings Act was, was another meeting that we had to have to discuss threatened legal action from you and your attorney. So it's obvious, we have to do something. We have to deal with the lawsuit. We have a duty to defend the lawsuit from the city, for the city. And so that's why I'm suggesting is that we can't allow the politics that are being played, and the games that are being played, to affect this legal process on behalf of the city, because your wife is asking for almost $10,000 in damages from the city.
Just fining the city for having secret meetings. If they don't get fined, they're going to do it over and over again.
Well, the one thing...
They're so proud about it.
And that's my point, and if you just examine that, and then I will be quiet. You keep talking about a "they."
The council has had a secret meeting while I was in Tanzania.
You should be using the word "we," because when you're sitting in that chair, you represent the city entity.
Well, the "I" got served, but my wife is not suing me.
She's suing...
I just have duties as a councilman to warn the council when they break the law.
Well, then, the last thing I could tell you is that when you make this motion, you probably should recuse yourself from voting on the motion because you do have that conflict of...
I'm going to vote against the motion to give a mayor any more power than he's already got.
I'm just advising you that you probably have a conflict of interest and should recuse yourself from even addressing any of these issues.
No, I don't. I'm being sued too, because I have a duty to warn the council not to make foolish decisions.
Any questions?
On that note, I'd like to make a motion, if I may at this time, that we appoint the mayor to head up our moving forward in this proceeding. In addition to that, to have the power to seek outside counsel if necessary.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All right, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Thank you.
That's all I have under the legal report, Mayor.
All right. Any questions for Joe? Next, we have old business. One thing I just wanted to bring up is that we had a gentleman from Ruston here last Wednesday. Is there any action we feel we need to take regarding his comments? And you might, Henry might fill you in on what we've found since then.
Well, what I did Thursday was I went to Nancy McCormick and to Jim Weeprek and asked them about this and why no action had been taken. When in fact, what I discovered at that point was, the gentleman that was here was part of the committee that actually put the rules together. So, him saying he did not have knowledge of this is not true.
Henry, I'd like to... It was not he himself, it was his partner in the business that was part of the group.
All right.
Now, isn't it true that the backward attempt to allow sidewalk sales that was made to give Jim the power to waive the current law, that that ordinance expired recently? And the merchant was not saying... The merchant was saying that they just didn't know that that had happened. And that's what I heard him say.
Jim did not have the authority to waive that. This was done by the council.
No, that's not...
Okay. Let me address. First off, the whole backwards attempt that you referenced...
If you want to change the law, you just change two words in the law and we can allow sidewalk sales. But instead, you super empowered the zoning administrator to waive the current law in order to allow for a temporary period of time that just sunsetted. Is that not correct?
Councilman Frazier, will you let Councilman Wentz speak, please?
I explained it countless times.
I asked your question.
Councilman Wentz has the floor.
Okay.
You can't interrupt me with a question and then expect to be answered like that. I explained several times why it was done the way it was. It was thought out very methodically. I have previous zoning experience in the city of Tawnytown, where I have knowledge on this, okay? The reason it was discussed at the Planning and Zoning Commission is because it was expiring. So the discussion was what we're going to do with it at that point, and we were to come to the council and discuss it here. So your insults can really stop. They're inappropriate, they're not becoming of you. I think that goes for the entire council here.
I didn't insult anybody. I want us to better law. I want, if you want to change the sidewalk ordinance, you ought to write an ordinance and change the sidewalk ordinance. Mr. Mayor, I voted against the proposal to super empower the zoning administrator to allow this temporary period of time. Then, the complaint of the merchants was that this expired and there was no provision to fix this problem. And so that's why they were here and frustrated. This is what I observed.
When the council approved the original motion to try this experiment for nine months, it was very clear that it did have an expiration date. And the fact that it expired, and maybe they weren't paying attention, really has little to do with it. But the question further is, that right now, it has expired. And I guess the question before, the question in my mind is, is that okay, or do we need to do something to remedy that?
On that note, I'd like to make a motion that we extend the period by six months so that the issue can be further figured out.
The same...
The provisional stay of enforcement. Yes, sir.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that. I just would like to speak to it, if I might, since I just seconded it. The allegation was made, from talking to merchants, that a couple people didn't take in things at night, and they were bad, and therefore, the concern that Jim monitor that had come up, so that if there were bad actors, that they would be disciplined for not cleaning up the street overnight. Well, I just think that a better way to do that would be for the town to talk to those individual people, instead of allowing the ordinance to expire without the knowledge of the people. I'm glad we're doing this. I hope we wouldn't go through this Monday night meeting without fixing the problem to allow businesses. It's been going on. I don't think it's been a bad experience for the town. There's a few allegations that I've heard, Mr. Mayor, about some people not being as tidy, or maybe leaving stuff overnight. But I think that those things can be vetted in the next six months, don't you agree, Commissioner, Councilman Vigliotti?
Oh, without doubt.
Okay. So I would move that we do that. I seconded it. Call the question on that.
One of the things that, I think the thing that concerns me more than anything, more than the original nine-month ordinance expiring, more than the fact that our zoning administrator did what he was supposed to do and carried out his duties, was the fact that it didn't come back before council before it happened. I would have liked to have some kind of, have had some kind of report. The ordinance that we approved for nine months is getting ready to expire next month. This is how it's worked so far. And that way, we could have avoided all of this and wouldn't have had to extend it. So hopefully, if we can make sure before the next six months ends, if this passes, we have a briefing at least a month before on how it's affected the city, whether it was good, bad, or indifferent. And certainly, the zoning administrator and those others who were involved in city administration can give us their opinion. That way, we can make an educated decision on whether it should continue or not continue.
Good point.
So that's the real crux of it, in my opinion. It has been moved and seconded. We extend the ordinance for another six months. Is there any more discussion?
It's not extending the ordinance, it's extending the stay.
Extending the stay, okay.
Stay of enforcement.
Stay of enforcement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Just like I said.
All right. Let's move into new business. Monthly financial report. Does anyone have any questions? Anyone like to make a motion to approve the monthly financial report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anybody have any questions or comments regarding that report? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Next, we have the accounts payable report. Can I care to make a motion to approve the accounts payable report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Next, we have the letter of credit reduction for Minnobrook. Can I address that briefly last meeting? Would anybody care to make a motion regarding that?
So moved.
Do that.
Is there a second?
Then I'll second his motion.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. We'll take some time for council reports tonight, and I'll begin with Councilman Frazier. Do you have any comments for the council?
I just have a question. I had announced that, under the economic development report, that the budget director for the state, David Brinkley, would be here for the breakfast this month. And I was corrected that he had not, had canceled. Is that still the status of his invitation?
That was last Friday, and yes, he didn't show.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I'd encourage the town to attend these events at that Friday, those Friday breakfasts. They are delightful, the programs are good. Nancy does a great job with that. She's doing a great job with getting good speakers in, and important newsmaking speakers in. And so I'd encourage folks to look at that agenda. It's found in our dates. I don't have it in front of me, but it has the dates, I think, of the other, the future months. But I just think it's a delightful Tawnytown gathering, so encourage folks to come out to Thunderhead and support that breakfast.
Okay. Brad, what do you have for us?
I don't have anything planning in zoning. However, on a personal note, I'd like to thank the city council and the mayor for your support. My father suffered a stroke several weeks ago. Fortunately, he has recovered, I would say, fully at this point, which is a true blessing. Unfortunately, his mother, my grandmother, passed away yesterday afternoon. After a very painful several months, she has left the earth. So I do ask for your prayers for the family in the meantime. And again, council and city staff, thank you for all your support as I went through these things.
Certainly, Brad. You have prayers here with you. Diane, do you have something for us?
First, my condolences to you.
Thank you.
Second, the new business Jumbles, they opened on Sunday.
I saw the balloons.
Yeah, I saw the balloons as I was coming from church. I didn't get a chance to get back, but they're open, up and running. Economic development-wise...
What does Jumbles do?
They call themselves a repurposing...
Repurpose.
It's all thrift shopping, upcycling is what it said on the sign.
Excellent.
And we continue to try and reach some sort of agreement that the owner of the Chinese restaurant will go for. Unfortunately, we're not there yet, but we keep plugging away. And I think that's, this past weekend, I attended my first board meeting of the MML. It was a training session, and we worked all day on a strategic plan. It was very enjoyable, and I learned a lot. And we'll meet next at the fall conference. I think that's it.
Very good. Joe, how about you?
Three brief things tonight. To Diane's point, on Saturday, I happened to wander into Jumble, and upcycling is a very good word for it. It's a really unique little store. One of the things that I noticed in there, they were explaining to me, one of the things that they do, and they do a lot of different things, they took shopping bags and were able to weave them to create handbags. So it's really interesting stuff that they do in there. Second thing is, on Friday, September 30th, at 6:30 PM, up at the Red Door Boutique, a couple of local citizens, businesses, and an organization are hosting a benefit night for Eloquent City. Emily Graham, Pat Grove, and the group Y T Town are going to be hosting it. The event is going to feature Light Fair, a silent auction with baskets of items donated by local businesses, artwork by local artist Dave Hammond, and I myself will be signing my latest novels there. Twenty percent of all sales at the Red Door that evening are going to be donated to Eloquent City, and 100% of the proceeds from any of the novels that I sell will be donated to Eloquent City. Donation fee of $5 is requested at the door, which will in turn be donated to Eloquent City. More information about the event can be found at the Eloquent City Benefit Night Facebook page. And I encourage everyone who can to attend. I mean, this is a perfect example of, you know, Tawnytown is one community helping out another. And then the third thing I'd like to do this evening is, there are a couple of things that I think absolutely have to be addressed this evening, and Mayor, if you would so humor me, there is a brief statement that I need to read relating to events that have occurred recently.
Certainly.
Mayor and council, ladies and gentlemen, the last time I ever truly used Councilmember Reports section of our meeting in a personal way was to thank everyone for their prayers and support a few years ago when my grandmother passed away. Since then, I have always used this time to bring forward the concerns of citizens and businesses, to offer ideas, or to talk about events going on in town. But now I find myself in a situation in which I absolutely must address something as a matter of both a personal honor and reputation, something which directly affects me in a way I have never before been compelled to confront. In the September 9th, 2016 Carroll County Times article, "City of Tawnytown Served For Alleged Violation of Open Meetings Act," Tawnytown City Councilman Donald Frazier was quoted as saying, "I want my time on the city council to be a time when government gets better." Before I left, I got Councilman Wentz and Vigliotti to agree that while I was away in Africa, they would have no meetings. Ladies and gentlemen, this is an outright lie. I never went to Councilman Frazier and promised I would have no meetings while he was away. I'm disturbed and disappointed by this, but not surprised by this, because this is only the latest in a long line of personal attacks levied against myself from a specific faction allied to him, ranging from that I am a traitor to that I am power-hungry. This is supplemented by countless personal attacks against the mayor, the other members of the council, the city staff, and the city of Tawnytown as a whole over the course of the past year. I have done my best to avoid having to contend with such behavior, wanting instead to remain focused on the city, but I cannot ignore this any longer. My honor and the reputation of the town I love and serve are both at stake. The fact that this is what is occupying the majority of the time of the mayor and council, rather than the business of the city, is demonstrative proof that things need to change now. The people of this town are horrified that this is what their council has come to and they want it to stop. Councilman Frazier claimed in the article that he wanted his time on the council to be a time in which things would get better. So if he actually means it, he must desist with his personal attacks against the city, those who serve it, those who work for it. He must focus squarely on the issues. He must endeavor to move the town forward in a productive manner, and he must retract and apologize for the misleading statement he made to the paper and the public about myself. Councilman Frazier claimed he wanted things to get better, now let him prove it. I'm done.
Thank you. Good. Thank you. Carl, what do you have to say?
Nothing from the police department, but Joe, I agree with you 1,000%. I know every day I get an earful from people that vote in this town about the shenanigans that go on at these meetings. Last meeting we had lasted about an hour and a half. Forty-five, forty-seven minutes of that time was taken up by you and your henchmen. We've got to move on from this. We look like fools being led by fool, and it's time for this to stop. It really, it really, truly is.
Thank you, Carl. A few comments and reminders that I would just like to bring up. First of all, Thursday, the Carroll County chapter will be meeting at Manchester, and we'll be joining the other municipalities at their location. And Manchester, some of you know, has a new town hall. If we get there by 6 o'clock, we can jump in and tour it. So, that's what we're planning to do, 6 o'clock on Thursday. I've got a carpool going with Diane, myself, and Carl. Room for one more, two more, if anybody wants to go. The other thing I wanted to bring up was the parade, FSK Homecoming Parade. Is, what, Henry?
Yeah, I just want to let you know that the MML Thursday night registration is now closed.
I had an email this morning that they were taking late reservations, if somebody changed their mind, but I mean, I got that this morning.
That's what we...
It's over?
That's the information that we have.
Okay. That's the only reason I brought it up, because I got an email this morning saying, if you haven't signed up, you could still sign up. That's all.
Oh, okay. Could you forward that to Clara, please?
I can forward it. Parade, Francis Scott Key Homecoming Parade is on the 28th of September. We are invited to participate, and I plan to participate. Hopefully, the rest of the council will participate too.
Okay.
And I told Nancy today that I would bring it up, and I assured her that we would participate. So, if...
They need to know who's participating.
They need to know who's participating.
What's it entail? Lots of walking.
Well, we've got two choices. We can walk, which would certainly be fine, or we can hit up one of our generous car dealers.
They always...
I mean, whatever you...
So it's here, in town?
Yeah, it's in town, yes. So I guess the first thing to do, if everybody is planning to attend, let's decide whether we're going to walk or ride.
I'm okay with either, so.
I will attend. Let's ride.
I will attend, but I'm riding.
You're riding, all right.
I'm not walking.
We need to contact either Endor, Kramos, Endor, Wentz, to see if we can get a couple vehicles.
Yeah, I can do that, that's...
Thank you, Carl.
Just as a reminder about this parade, this is their homecoming parade, and the parade is rotated between the three municipalities, and this is our second time around, and it's been well-received, and I think it's great we're able to do that.
Yeah. It's always fun, you know, we had all kinds... We used to have parades all the time. Now we don't have any, so it's good to...
Get this one.
That's what I was...
What was the date on that again, Mr. Mayor?
The 28th.
But we'll have instructions on how to assemble and all that kind of stuff, but typically, it starts up here by the bank and the elementary school and proceeds down this way, but I don't know whether that's official this year or not. I haven't, nobody's told me. I want everybody to put that on the calendar. Next month, of course, is the MML Fall Convention. I will, we'll talk more about that next month, but I wanted to let you know that we had the first Legislative Committee meeting last Thursday, and this is the meeting where we examine all the LARs, Legislative Action Requests that various municipalities send in. And quite frankly, it was, I guess, I may have been on this committee pushing 30 years, but I don't think I've ever seen a weaker set of LARs in my life.
Nothing happens.
But we'll come up with something, I'm sure. Don't quote me, Michelle, please. But we obviously have the highway user revenues, which I assume will be our top priority. Again, this year, we all voted, we decide next Thursday how that's going to come out. But some of the things that we were concerned about is being able to be notified from the power companies when they're going to trim trees. That was a big issue. And another issue was allowing the municipality to come up with special projects that they would fund through special taxes in their towns. Quite frankly, it was, I mean, I don't have to go through all that. I'll let you know the results next month, but it was, or actually, I'll let you know the results on Thursday, because we'll be at the MML meeting on Thursday, and we'll have that tally for us at that time. So you'll know Thursday what that is. But just want to let you know that that's up and running, so I don't have anything else. Anything else, council, to bring before us tonight?
I make a motion for adjournment.
Second. Sir, second.
Second.
Any favor? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign.
I say no.
Thank you very much.
We should allow the public to speak at these meetings.
Ah, to return to those days of yesteryear when we were able to do that.